Okay, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We're on live television. I'm going to ask everybody to quiet down and sit down, please. This is the October meeting of the Nottingham Zoning Board of Adjustment. We have no, we have no Kevin tonight, apparently not. So let me say, are both applicants here? Yes? So let me just say, before I introduce the board members, that we have a light board tonight. Normally, we're five persons. And you need to get a minimum of three votes to get approved on everything. We vote separately on the five criteria. So I offer you the option of putting off your hearing until we do have a full board, like next month. Or you can go forward, it's up to you. Knowing that it's easier to get three when there are five, odds-wise, but entirely up to you. So, members of the board, Peter White, Teri Bonzer, Teresa Bascom, and I'm Bonnie Winona McKinnon, and I'm the chairman. I will be running the meeting tonight. I haven't seen our agenda yet. I mean, I'm sorry, did I? Do we have, do we don't have anything before the hearing? Hearings?
We made the agenda.
Yeah. Right there, I have it. So we have two hearings, and then we'll deal with sort of normal business after the hearings. Okay? So I now declare the first hearing open. This is case number 19010-VA-VA. An application from Christopher Evans on behalf of the current owners, Stephen Musial and Dania Jackson, for two variance requests from Article 2, Section C, Dot 1, Parenthesis A of the Nottingham Zoning Ordinance. One request is to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record, Tax Map 70, Lot 30, which meets all zoning criteria except the lot has 200 feet of frontage, non-contiguous frontage, on a private road, not on a Class 5 or better as provided in the definitions for frontage. The second request from the Evans is to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record, Map 70, Lot 31, which meets all zoning criteria except the lot, the lot has 200 feet minimum frontage on a private road, not a Class 5 or better as provided in the definitions for frontage. The properties are located on Tuckaway Shores Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and are identified as Tax Map 70, Lots 30 and 31. So the rules of engagement here are... I have called the hearing in session and read the application. So, members of the board may ask questions at any time during testimony by any person. Each person who appears shall be required to come up to this table and sit in one of these chairs, and state their name and address, and indicate their affiliation to the case. Any member of the board through the chairperson may request any party to the case to speak a second time. So you might be called back up. Any party to the case who wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do so through the chairperson. The applicant shall be called to present their case, and those of butters in favor shall be allowed to speak. So we'll first hear the applicant present his or her application to us. And then, any butters in the audience will be allowed to speak. Any butters in favor will be allowed to speak first, and then butters in opposition. The board will hear any evidence that pertains to the case from other parties that wish to speak. So anyone may bring evidence to this hearing. The applicant and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. The chairperson shall present a summary setting forth the facts of the case and the claims made for each side, with opportunity given for correction from the floor. The hearing shall be declared closed. And then the board will deliberate and may vote to approve or disapprove the application immediately after the close of the hearing, or wait until the members can prepare their statements of reasons for their vote with a final decision of the board made within 30 days of the hearing. So we can delay the hearing if we feel we need advice, or we need to hash it out more. We usually decide during the hearing, just so you know, but not always. So a simple majority is necessary to validate a decision. So you need three votes and the affirmative to have your application approved. So, the first case will be the Mr. Christopher Evans. And, are you Christopher Evans?
I am he.
There you go. Come up to the table, please, sir.
Now, there are, in fact, two lots here, so are we talking about one first, or both at the same time, or what's?
I would say that that is up to you. I saw in the plan that they are adjacent lots.
Yes.
And so where the circumstances apply to both, you're certainly, I think it's certainly okay if the board members agree for you to speak to them both in one presentation. If there are some special circumstances about either of them that separate them, then you should talk, take that section and talk about them separately.
Okay. I will, there is a subtle difference in the two.
Yeah, it's true that really no two pieces of property are ever the same.
So, we, my girlfriend and I, we just purchased this property. We had it under purchase for a long time, but there were issues with the estate. The property was owned by Mr. Musial, who bought it in about 1959 or so, when the original subdivision was conducted, Tuckaway Shores. And he built a little cabin there. And then he bought the two lots behind it over different periods of time. One was, I think, in 1962. And the second lot, the deed shows it being recorded in 1996. So they were purchased at two separate times. The, his intention, and my dad knew Henry Musial in Manchester, at a service station in Manchester, my dad knew too. So they knew each other. I grew up with Steve and went to high school with him. So known the family for a long time. And, I mean, it's unfortunate that, you know, it's one of those properties that's held in the family for a long time, and you know, it's like when someone dies, that's when they, you know, it becomes available. Been in the property, in the family for 50 years. But Steve and Anya, you know, weren't able to keep up with it and had other purposes in life. But my dad did buy these two lots behind his cabin. Cabin's right on the water there. And with the intention of having a little kind of family compound for both of his two kids. And so, when this came available, we saw this same opportunity, basically, that I have a daughter that's in medical school right now. And we'd like to retire there at some point, a lot of people do. Probably not just yet, but in a few more years from now. But since the two lots behind it, I thought would be a great opportunity to have a family member, have a home nearby and live, you know, with us in that area. Not, you know, trying to make an apartment or something in this little cabin, but to have a separate home, and they can be far enough away that they're not there every day. So...
So can I ask a clarifying question here? I heard Joanne ask you if you brought your deed.
Yes.
Because your application states that the Musials, Musial and Jackson are the owners. Is that correct?
They were the owners until last Monday.
Okay, so you just closed on the property?
Yes, we did. They did sign up permission to make application on their behalf so we could start the process. And then, and then, it was also in our purchase agreement that we could do that, you know, apply to, you know, make sure that these are built as low as possible to be used. So we closed after the deeds from, we closed last Monday. So I do have those deeds here.
Maybe you could just leave a copy with Joanne? Do you have a copy?
Yes.
Sorry, Madam Chairperson, does that totally alter his application? I mean, the information isn't correct on what we have in front of us. I think he has to refile it.
No, I don't think so, and here's why. I don't see, this is why these should be in our packet. He said that they designated him as their agent before he closed on it.
Right, but it says here the owners are Steve Musial and Anya Jackson, and that's not correct. And that's what's on the application. I mean, the application is not correct, I'm sorry.
The application was correct, and the circumstances have changed, but the same people are involved. You can just, I'm perfectly comfortable, I don't know how the other members of the board feel, in letting Mr. Evans go forward since he now is the owner. He's only been the owner for a week. And his application has been filed for probably several weeks. See? It's not that any of the parties have changed, except the Musial-Jacksons are now no longer...
The deed has changed, the tax records are now changed, and the application has changed.
The tax records are probably not changed yet. The deed goes from the closing to the registry of deeds, and then it comes to the town about two months later. So, the town wouldn't even have that information yet. That's the way it used to be, anyway. So, I'm going to rule that he can go forward unless anybody has some legal objection.
If I may just roll this out there, because I did consider that this timing could be kind of a question or something. The variance goes along with the lot. So if Steve and Anya got a variance last week, that variance would stay in place with the lot. So it could be sold 50 different times, and that variance would still follow the lot.
That's correct. The variance runs with the land forever.
So I felt that that would be, that would be just simply like, whether it's sold a week after the variance, a week before, I didn't see how that would be different.
Well, I just came from a training on ZBA, and they stress how important the application has to be accurate.
It is accurate, though. It is accurate at the time it was made out. Could we please have a copy of your deed, sir?
I mean, you can proceed, you're the chairperson, but like I say, this isn't accurate.
It was accurate when he made the application.
It's not accurate right now. And this is what we have before us tonight, is inaccurate information.
I'd like to hear from the other two board members. What's your feeling on it, Teri?
My feeling of it is that, as it says applicant's information, it's Christopher Evans' name that's on here. And the owners were them, the Musials and Jackson. But now that he has it, so that it's, in my opinion, it's Mr. Evans' application.
My one question is, say we made a ruling, this was appealed to Superior Court, this is the information they would get. And I think they would stop.
I think a reasonable person would say that since he was their agent in the first place...
If time is of the essence, it's something, you know, pressing, we have to do it tonight. I guess I can understand moving forward. But I don't know what the urgency is.
Teri, what did you think?
Yeah, I agree with you both. You know, I think, I mean, the application was made out, the butters were notified. They have, are here to object, or, I mean, they've got their notice. The only thing that's happened is the land has changed, changed names, and that's... And I agree with him that if they had gotten a variance, you know, two weeks ago, and he bought the land, it would still go with it, so...
I think it's, it's not like he's got Mickey Mouse down here, or my name, or somebody else's name. The chain of title is clear on his deed. It went from these people to him. He was their agent in the first place. I really don't think it's an issue. I don't think the courts would have an issue.
No, I think the court would give a wide...
Birth.
Birth, yeah, I think they would.
And I think that if his name was not on the application at all, that would be something different.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Anyway, there's always a first. This is not an issue that's come before the board before. I agree with Peter that applications have to be accurate. But I don't think it's inaccurate because the property changed hands in the process. And it went from these people to their agent. Anyway, you may continue, sir.
Would it be suitable to have, and I don't know if this is how this works or not, but a motion to amend the owner information on the application?
I don't think we can change the application. We don't change the applications.
Okay.
I don't think, if anyone takes you to court over this name on the application, I would be surprised, but you never know. I don't think it's particularly likely, and I'm not sure the court would find it unusual or bad procedure on our part. I feel comfortable with it, personally.
Had it not closed, and it was just, it was a long time because of the state and complications with the lawyers, had it not closed, I would have been here anyway for Steve and Anya to present.
Anyway.
So go ahead with your presentation.
Go ahead.
So, Lot 31, we met with Dale and discussed, you know, building on the lot, setbacks, all of the criteria. There's a septic per test done, septic design was completed, meeting all state guidelines. On one of the two lots, he noted that there was a town setback. And on the septic, which I think you guys see all the time, septic being altered to 20 feet. But he did say, you know, if you, that has to be 20 feet, otherwise... So we went back to the septic designer, and he moved it back. It was just a couple feet too close to the line, not knowing that the town had a separate, you know, stricter standard than the state. So, we went back to see Dale, discussed the, all the lot setbacks, the lot area, the zoning restrictions and criteria to, you know, potentially build a single-family home. And he said, well, the only issue here is that you are on a private road. So we're here for variance on the private road. So, again, it is a lot of record. It was created in the subdivision that was approved in 1957. The years, in this particular subdivision, there's about 35 other homes. And they are all on a private road, 100% of them. I didn't go beyond this particular subdivision to look at other areas in the town along the lake, but it's pretty consistent that everywhere along the lake, there's a lot of lots that are, you know, about a third, quarter, half acre, whether on the waterfront or just in from the waterfront, on private roads. One of the things that's a little different about here is this is, the selection, I believe, is devoted to extend this road as a emergency lane, meaning that they plow the road, and they have for many years. And they do keep it plowed for emergency access, for fire trucks and police and the ambulances and water rescues, and to, you know, have access to the lake, or, you know, whatever they need. So it is actually maintained. And the other homes, there's some people that live in the area year-round, and there's some people that, you know, are out of state, and they just have little camps up there. It's kind of a mixture. On Lot 31, it's, it does have 300 feet of frontage on the road.
Excuse me, 31 or 32, because you said 31 for the first one?
I said 31.
Okay, so still talking about 31? Okay.
So, with regards to the private road, I'd like to touch base on the criteria for the variance. The, it's not contrary to public interest. Property rights are protected under the U.S. Constitution, state constitution, and upholding property rights and laws is of public interest. The zoning ordinance and the master plan do permit single-family homes in this area. The purposes of the zoning in the master plan provide for safe, modern housing, protection of public peace, safety, and welfare. And permitting of safe, modern housing is consistent with the zoning in the master plan. There are housing needs that are of public interest. The public has to live somewhere. Denying the restriction of the rights of the property does not serve any public interest. There's no adverse impacts to the town or other town facilities, or utilities, or services, as these are all presently provided at this location. And several, past this location, several homes. So this is kind of at the beginning of the whole neighborhood area. So there's many homes past this that it gets to. So there's no adverse public impacts here. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed. The zoning ordinance provides for housing needs of the public. Dwellings are permitted in this district. Other dwellings exist in this district. The proposal is consistent with the zoning, the spirit of the ordinance, and uses in this location. The zoning does provide and permit for modern, safe housing. And we are looking to be part of this community. We'd like to have our family be here and part of this community. Substantial justice is done. Denial of variance would unduly, unfairly, and unjustly limit the constitutional rights of the owner in the use of this property. It would deprive us of any minimal usage of this property. You know, it's not like we could put a nuclear power plant, or a factory, or some other thing. This is the minimum usage that we could even ask for. Anyway, usage is consistent with the usages of other properties in the area. It's similar in this frontage and lot configurations in this area. It would be fair to just permit similar rights of usages as those currently enjoyed by all the neighbors in the area, in this district. And variance would be fair just to mention. Use of the surrounding properties. Many of the surrounding properties are camps and more than 50 years old. There are some updated, modern homes. There have been some variances rented in this area and nearby on private roads. Just, I'm just looking at about eight or nine of them listed over the last couple of years. So, the proposal is a single-family home. And it's anticipated to be newer, safer, more modern, more energy-efficient than the other homes in this area. The value is anticipated to probably be equal or higher to the other properties, thereby bringing up the overall average value of the properties, and making the area a little bit nicer. And so just being all camp should be a nice, single-family homes. It's consistent with the use in this area, and it will not diminish the value of other homes. No fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of the provisions to the property. And again, the thing that separates this is that a lot of the homes were built before the zoning came along. And then the zoning changed, and now this precludes or limits the rights of these missed property. So, the hardship in this circumstance is... The zoning has changed to, you know, preclude, you know, any use on this private road. Again, we're only asking for access that other people have on the same private road. So we want to use it similarly to others in this area. Zoning regulations, they changed and they restricted the rights to use this in the way that others are using in this area. And there's no fair substantial relationship between this property and others, because others have a right to use the private road, and this one, according to the zoning, does not. So others are permitted to have reasonable use of this property. The zoning ordinance applied to this property restricts equal use that others have. It's unfair. It's a reasonable use, it's a single-family home on a private road. There are many, many, many of those in the town, and many, many, many in this area. In fact, I just give my pictures, if I may. This diagram, which I can pass up there, is, shows all the homes in the area, and the road comes in. There's road forks. This is the only access that goes back into Raymond, basically. And highlighted on here are all of the houses that are on the private road. Basically, 100% of them are on a private road. So 100% of these people have a right to use their property. This one, according to the zoning ordinance, does not. If the zoning were applied towards all the other homes, then none of them would be able to be there, basically. Applying a higher standard to this property than to others severely limits or precludes antirightful use of this property. The variance would be a minimum relief from this undue, unshared restriction. The proposal is reasonable, permitted, consistent with the zoning and with the... Without the variance, no use is permitted. That's all.
Did you have anything different to add for Lot 30?
Um, yes, Lot 30. Let me jump to that one for one second.
Just the differences, all I'm looking for. You don't have to read the same thing all over.
I won't. I spare you so we all go home.
No, I just, basically, that information would be the same. I just want to know what the difference is, because you said there was a difference.
Well, here's the thing with Lot 30. Lot 30 does, in fact, have 200 feet of frontage. But it's, the road kind of wraps around the corner, and there's frontage on the same road in two different locations. So, I don't know if we call that contiguous frontage or non-contiguous frontage, if you have the same frontage on the same exact road, but it's not connected to... So, that is the main difference here.
There's 100 feet in the front and 100 feet in the back.
Right.
Non-contiguous.
So, and I did make a small... Oh. This lovely colorful diagram here, this is the first one, which shows all the houses on a private road, which is also what this is part of, private road, on the same private road, you know, used. But this orange area, there's about 30 lots in the area, or 35 houses, and 41 lots. And again, 100% are on the private road. But the orange ones highlighted all have less than 200 feet of contiguous frontage. There is this same question that comes up when you have a lot like 61, which is on the corner and has frontage on three roads. Is that contiguous frontage on one road? I don't know.
Are the roads contiguous? Then it is contiguous. Just means it's connected.
They're connected, yes, they are connected.
But as far as the private road goes, it doesn't really matter. You don't have frontage on a public road, so that's the key.
Right. And many of them have 60 feet, 70 feet, far less than the 100 or 200, depending on which way you're looking at this. We are proposing to, you know, keep the lots up near the top section. You know, there's a couple houses down on the waterfront there, and, you know, keep them orientated closer to the access. closer to the access out, and have driveways there to maintain privacy near the lake and all that. I will be one of those people that is looking to maintain that privacy, because I have a house on the lake on Lot 33. So that would be the main difference. Otherwise, we're the same criteria as far as wanting, asking for minimal usage, except from the variance due to the availability.
Can you tell me when you put this property under agreement?
Quite a long time ago, and...
Did you have a long period for closing?
Extremely. In fact, I was very hyped about missing a prime summer.
What you own Lot 33?
Pardon me?
What you own Lot 33?
33 and 30 and 31, yes, as a package.
Oh, so you bought them, all three of them together?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, like I said, with the estate, there was just a lot of...
So before you filed with Joanna to come before this board, you had a purchase and sales agreement on this property?
Affirmed.
So that gives him an equitable interest in the property, by the way, when he does have certain rights anyway. I mean, that makes me feel even better. Where the owners agreed to let him go for a variance on property that they owned, and they were all in the process of changing ownership before he applied.
It's true. And in the purchase and sales agreement, it does, under additional provisions, it says seller gives permission to buy or his representatives to conduct, you know, enter the property, conduct any, make any applications, agrees to sign separate authorizations or applications if applicable. And we could do test pits, septic designs, you know, and surveying, you know, at our own expense, so make applications to the property.
So would you mind leaving a copy of that with Joanna?
I...
Do you have another copy, or?
Can I leave just the back page? I don't know if there's other information here that's maybe not...
If you're talking about M-O-N-E-Y, it is public. Anybody can go to the registry and look it up. If you're talking about the price?
I'm sorry?
The price that you paid.
Okay.
It's not public, but it is public.
Oh, no, no.
The tax stamps will say whatever that monetary amount was. I'm a real estate agent, can I tell you?
The back page, the additional provisions, has their signatures and outlines the authorization.
How about the front page that describes the property, so that there's something that goes together? Are you comfortable? I'm not trying to pry into, I just want this in the file.
Okay.
That the board was made aware that you had an equitable interest in the property at the time of application.
Can I note that that's in the minutes? So if he's really uncomfortable having that, it's in the minutes, and then it could be accessed at the registry if necessary.
That's not at the registry, just the deed is at the registry. With the text.
I, there's just something in here that's...
Personal?
Yes, there is one thing, but so I'll...
Could you redact that? Could you make a copy and redact it?
I'll just provide the top and the back page. The middle page that has some details in there that are...
Private. That's fine. It will be enough to show that you had the property under agreement before you came before this board, before you applied to come before this board.
And I just make a copy of that for that purpose, in case that was a question.
Do you want a copy of it right now?
No, no, I...
You have it. Okay, so that's for us.
If you want to just...
You have your own.
We have a...
Someone to see this, Peter.
Does anybody want to see the purchase and sales agreement?
I am indeed.
I just want to say something that's totally not part of the hearing. I noticed that your phone number is 759-9777, and my office number is 659-7779. What are the odds of that?
If we need to call you, that'll be handy.
Well, you have to move the numbers around a little bit, but it's just weird. Numbers. Okay, so if you're done, sir? Does the board have any questions before you leave?
Yes, you said you got test pits and septic designs on both lots?
Yes, sir.
Have you already started, you had a design by state standards?
Yes, they're designed by a licensed state designer. And they meet the state guidelines.
Now, have you addressed the drainage problems there?
He did build the lot, do the test pits, soil samples, flagged off the areas on the lot. In one of the lots down at the very bottom, close to lake, there's a small wet area, but the, everything was in accordance with the state guidelines to be away from whatever minimum distances there are, or whatever total. I'm not an expert in that business.
You know, every time it rains hard, property below yours there gets flooded. It's like a river that comes down the road, because your property's uphill. So if you were to clear cut those two lots, that would probably make the problem a lot worse. You would have to clear cut those two lots to put two houses on there.
And I was thinking about complaining to the neighbors upstream from us, in the case that ever happened. But we'll save that for another meeting, we have to do that. There is no intention to clear cut the lots, and again, it's a matter of maintaining the privacy and orientation away from the lake and the lower side to allow for an uninterrupted forested area to be protected and basically.
Well, my concern is, these are very tiny lots. They were actually meant to be camp lots, not for year-round houses originally. And to be able to put in a single-family houses with septic systems and wells and roads, you're going to have to pretty much move most of the woods that are there, which will not only add to the drainage problems, but it will definitely affect the property values of people around there to have that piece of woods all of a sudden cleared right in the middle of them. So I'm, you know, I've got a few concerns on that.
Well, one of the lots is his own.
Right, well, he's living in one house, right? So you already have a house. It's not really a hardship for you not having two more houses behind yours.
The hardship is about the right to build on a private road, and not really about meeting the setbacks. I think that's handled by the building inspector, and the septic plan is handled by the state. So, you know, I think the variance we're looking for is, can we build on a private road like the other homes are not? Certainly, somebody, I guess, could clear cut an entire lot at any given time if they wanted to. And whether they had a variance or didn't have a variance, or build or not build, and affect the drainage for the downwind people, but that's not the intention here, certainly.
Right, well, our job here is to figure out how, by granting this variance, it will affect the community versus how your private rights are being affected. So if it's going to affect your butters in a negative way, and it's going to add to the drainage problems right next to Pawtucket Way Lake, and I don't see how these septic won't just drain downhill right into the lake, right across the street from the lake. So, once again, there are some concerns with this particular location, and because of existing conditions and other people surrounding it. So if it's going to impact the neighborhood, we have to look at that.
There is a, according to the neighbor, there is an area at the end of the road that does receive drainage. And in fact, here, Mr. Potvin is here, and we were chatting, standing at the end of the road and looking over, and he had just done some landscaping at the end of the road, and you could see where it had kind of, you know, the water was running, and he said, oh, it kind of washed off, so we replaced that there, and degraded it. And I said, well, where does it go? Does it go in the lake? He said, no, there's a small area here where this water kind of is received before it goes into, so it doesn't drain directly into the lake. And additionally, there's a road right there in between this that, you know, certainly any person driving down that road, leaking oil or gas, could have a much more severe impact than building a single-family home is permitted in this area. The, this, the roads could wash out, and probably do. And that's, you know, that's not our roads. We're not asking to build on the road. We're asking to build on a privately-owned lot, basically. So I can't, I can't predict, you know, all the rain and weather, but again, we're going to use reasonable standards to build and have to meet state criteria and town criteria for the setbacks, and maybe a good buffer so that, you know, there is a buffer to protect the others.
But that's why it's helpful to drive by these properties, is because you can't look on this map and see the slopes, and see the conditions, see the existing gutters where the water's draining down. You just can't see that information here. So if you drive over there, to be honest, I drove around that corner, and I looked at that, and I thought you were only going to put one house on that, those two lots. It's like, how's he going to do that? To imagine two single-family houses going on that corner, I don't know how, like I said, I think it will major impact the neighborhood, and I don't see how it wouldn't add more to the drainage problem. I mean, where's all that water going to go? It's not going to be absorbed into that area where it's going now. It's just going to be more going down that hill.
Actually, that question came up in a previous hearing. Terry, are you the person who said, or did somebody say, that septic system water doesn't go out, it goes down?
Right, yeah, it does go down.
Because of the way the system is designed?
I mean, how far? Gravity.
It goes down a few feet.
Well, but it goes down till it meets, you know, surface water, and by then it's purified, so, and that's the idea behind it, so.
We are thinking about a relatively small footprint, maybe 900 square feet. And, you know, if you look at some of the other homes in the area, even like the downstream, if you will, home from there, you know, they have a similar lot size, it's about a third of an acre, they have a similar lot size, and they've got a three-car garage, they've got a big patio, they run down the water, they have, every tree is removed, or almost every tree is removed from the lot, so there's nothing receiving interfering with water coming from the road across their land, or their own water coming on their own land going to the lake. There's no barrier or drainage or anything. They have a 3,000-square-foot footprint of a home, between the original home, the addition, the porches, the decks, the walkways, the driveway, and the three-car garage, and we're looking at something very simple comparatively. I mean, we can't protect what they've already done to their lots. They've already created this situation, so we're going to have our little piece of heaven on our lot.
We can make it worse or not, you know, that's kind of what's on us.
I think we, as a board, have already been admonished about getting into the question of how big some of these houses, that's not really our province here tonight.
We have to look at if it's going to be bad for the public interest. That's something we have to look at. If it's going to be bad for the neighborhood.
What we have to look at, Peter, is can he build on the private road? It's frontage. Period, end of story, is what his application is about.
Well, no, and that's what I think a mistake we've been making, is just because there's a pre-existing lot in these communities, doesn't mean it's an appropriate building lot. It means it's something that they did back in the 50s, 60s, 70s.
We vote on the five criteria. One of them is the spirit of the ordinance, one of them is public welfare. If you don't think it's going to meet those, then you vote no on those.
Yes.
Those who think it does, vote yes on those, and that's how we deal with it.
Yes, and that's where some of my confusion was on some of these past ones, is...
And if you remember from what Bonnie read initially, it's that it meets all zoning criteria except the frontage. It's all zoning criteria except the frontage.
And that's not our province either. That's the building inspector's call. Does he meet the zoning criteria? You need your permits. We just deal with whatever the applicant requests. In this case, it's road frontage.
But the number one issue is public welfare. We can't ignore that.
That's not the number one issue, it's one of the five criteria. Which I hope they're in my packet here, Joanna?
Yes.
Okay. Do any other board members have questions of Mr. Evans?
No.
Okay, so you may step back, and I'm going to call anyone who wishes to speak in support of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
Gary Potvin from Six, Tuckaway Shores, in Butter. Not necessarily in opposition of frontage or the issues or what Chris has presented here, but if I have to pick one, I guess this is the one, because you have concerns, and maybe this isn't the right forum, and you can...
You may bring anything to our attention, sir, that you think is relevant.
So the drainage is a concern. I would like to set the record straight. However, Mr. Evans, you know, made it sound like we did nothing to protect the land we...
Are you the person with the large house?
Yes. With full gutters and dry wells to collect all that water. We had to invest an additional $20,000 this year to address drainage issues and the septic system. The water runs down that driveway, non-septic water, that's not my concern. It was general, from a, turns the corner, it's laying right on top of a brand-new leach field. The septic service came out, and they said that leach field is going to be no good within two years if you don't do something about it. So we had to have an engineer come, and the engineer did the plan. The area that Mr. Evans is referring to, where they said, you know, if we can kind of direct it a little to go this way down into the flatland area, that's what we attempted to do. They put in a piece of curving, some granite curving, and that part has worked okay, you know, it is not laying on the leach field any longer. But to Mr. White's, you know, concern as well, is if you put two more houses up there, just how much more surface water is there, and where does it go? It can certainly be addressed, and I think, you know, with proper either storm drains and/or dry wells and gutters, you know, if that's something that's appropriate, I think that that can work fine.
So may I ask you how old your septic system is? Is it new?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
When we put the addition on, we agreed to do a new septic system with it, even though there was nothing wrong with the old one, other than it was built in 1960-something. And we just, in order to upgrade the, you know, the safety of that system, we elected to put that in, and that was part of one of the stipulations as well.
Did you have to come before this board?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to this application? Would you like to rebut anything, Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I just think, again, we just like the same rights as others in the area, and this would be the minimum criteria to be able to use these lots in some sort of way.
Hey. Would you consider making some kind of motion?
To accept the application?
If you wish, and if you do, maybe add something about drainage, storm drains.
Is the public hearing closed?
Did you close the public hearing?
No.
Okay.
I will close the public hearing.
You will?
Does the board wish to deliberate among us? We have an application before us for two variances, well, one on each lot having to do with road frontage or the lack of road frontage on a public road.
Private.
Private road, thank you. Lack of road frontage on a public road. He has road frontage on a private road. And the applicant has spoken to the five criteria. We've heard from one person in the neighborhood who has a bit of a concern about drainage.
Has everybody else had a chance to do a drive-by? I think that's something we should make as part of our regular procedures, just so we can see what we're ruling on. It's hard to envision us looking at these pieces of paper.
I, I hear you, but I have had, um, not the opportunity to do that for this case. But I do, I do agree with you that we, it is a priority. I just have not had the opportunity.
I'm, I'm familiar with the area. I mean, I've worked over that area, so I'm familiar with this area.
And do you think that septic systems can be adequately designed?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's got to meet state criteria, so.
Most of their lots are of similar size in the area, so, um, they, you know, have to set bigger well and, you know, like, and see.
And, and DES is part of this anyway, right?
What's that?
The DES, Department of Environmental Services would be involved because it's.
Oh, yeah, no, maybe the asset. Did you already submit it or did you?
Um, did not.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you under, is that shoreline protection or do you need shoreline protection on either one of those or you're back for?
That, that was another reason why they did actually, um, you know, stay up on the top side away from the lake and the shoreline protection.
Okay.
With the septic suing, with the septic designs.
Yes, everything.
So your, your disturbance of the lots will be further back from, from the side that's near the lake?
Yes.
And you, will you be out of the shoreline protection zone?
Yes.
Yes, I'll close it again.
I didn't hear you say that it was, just that you were going to. I didn't hear you do that, actually.
I know, but we can still ask him questions.
Yeah.
I've closed it to the, the public hearing, to the public. So, does any, anyone wish to make any further comments, suggestions?
Well, I do have a question on, and I guess it would be for you, or maybe you can answer, Bonnie. I know that in planning, for the, before the planning board, we can require gutters, dry wells, et cetera, et cetera.
We can do that.
We can do that here as well.
We've done it many times.
Okay. So it is conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to, you make the motion subject to.
Okay. What is the correct wording for, so just best prac, best practices regarding, then that would be happening anyway?
Storm drains, gutters, use of impervious materials for driveways and so forth.
All right. Madam Chair, when I move the approved case nineteen dash zero one zero dash VA dash VA, um, application from Christopher Evans to permit building on two lots of record, map seventy, lot thirty-one, map seventy, lot thirty-one on Tuckaway Shores, subject to consideration of dry wells, gutters, and best practices for storm drainage for driveways, and the remainder of the lot that is affected through the construction.
Can I just ask you to make one small amendment? You said lot thirty twice, or lot thirty.
Thirty-one twice.
Twice.
I'm sorry, thirty, thirty.
Change one of the thirty-ones to thirty, Joanna. Maybe we, we read the motion so the board can hear it. And then we're going to vote on the five criteria as they are applied to the motion and the application.
It's in a second and then it's done.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Correctment round through is for both thirty and thirty-one.
That is correct.
Round through them both at the same time, yes. Will you read the motion for a minute, please?
Read the motion?
Yeah, so the board can hear it since we discussed.
I summarized it.
That's okay.
I want you to read it over, what I said over again?
Sure, that sounds good.
All right, make sure you captured it correctly?
Sure.
Approved case one nine dash zero one zero dash VA, dash VA, application from Christopher Evans to approve the variance request, should I say, from Article two, Section C, one A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance, to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on map seventy, lot thirty, and map seventy, lot thirty-one, subject to dry wells, gutters, and best practices for storm drainage for driveways, an area of lot disturbed during construction.
It's, you're still good with seconding that?
Yeah, I did the second.
So we've heard it again. And I'm going to go through the five criteria, so I would like you to vote on the five criteria. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. All those who agree with that statement, raise your right hand. All those opposed? The spirit of the ordinance would be observed. All those who agree with that? Those opposed? Substantial justice would be done. Those who agree with that, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in an un. Oh, thank you, I was wondering where the fifth word was. The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Those who agree with that, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. Those who agree with that statement, raise your right hand. Those opposed? And B, the proposed use is a reasonable one. Those who agree, raise your right hand. Those opposed? We have three, three to all of them. Your application has been approved, Mr. Evans, and you will receive written notification from Joanna. You should just be aware that anybody has thirty days to appeal our decision, so you might want to wait to start construction until those thirty days are up. Otherwise, the risk is yours. Okay, the second hearing this evening before this board is an application, let me find it. Case number nineteen dash zero one one dash VA. Application from Thomas and Patricia Matty for a variance request, Article three, capital B, number two of the Nottingham, Nottingham zoning ordinance, to permit an accessory dwelling unit in an existing home within fifty feet of poorly drained soils. The property is located at Eight McKayla Way in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map forty-nine lots nineteen, sub-lot eighteen. Okay, so then it says map error on public hearing notice and building inspector denial letter, map forty-two is the correct map. So the notice had the wrong.
The wrong map.
Hmm.
However, all butters were, indeed notified.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, please state your name and address so that Joanna can have it for the record.
I'm Patricia Matty of Eight McKayla Way. My husband's not here, but Joanna said it didn't need to be because he signed.
That's correct.
Gary Anderson, Gary Anderson, Old Improvement LLC, so I'd be, uh, provide the application with, um, the builder for the ADU, that is the question. May I mention, we have more drawings here.
Excuse me, you have more drawings, did you say?
It's the same copy that you have up there, but you'd like another copies.
Um, actually, it might not hurt just to have one more so that we can see them without passing it around. If you're going to be referring to it, it might be helpful to the, for the board.
Watch out, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. So this is, this drawing is of the lot, yes? Survey of the lot with, showing the existing building and with the proposed addition and the location of the wetlands with poorly drained soils.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, just give you an explanation on that. The, um, being that these are, um, open space developments, the lot setbacks are a little different than most of the town. So the requirement, I believe, is thirty-five feet from the front setback.
That, that's what Dale Silvia has put on the denial letter, so, yeah, thirty-five feet is the setback.
Right, so that is met on the front. Um, that, the, really, the setback in question is to the, what's marked as poorly drained wetland. Um, there, the request is really for the, for an ADU, which would be twenty-four by thirty feet, um, attached to the side of the existing dwelling. And in doing so, would bring us to that mark, that marked, uh, poorly drained wetland at thirty-seven point eight eight. Um, this is, um, surveyed and marked by place del survey. Uh, earlier today, I actually did, um, contract this for my client, uh, contract the survey and the surveyor told me earlier today that this wetland, um, granted it is marked on all, all of the, um, town records, however, he did testing of soils, plants, et cetera. And really, the only, his description to me was, the reason that it is a wetland is because it's a, um, it's just a kind of a lower spot that water just tends to accumulate. Most of the year it's dry, however, so he didn't see a, a problem, how this would ever affect that one.
Okay, so I have a question. I mean, it shows on this map that you gave us, this, that it's thirty-seven point eight eight feet from the wetland. And it's, and he's saying that it only has to be thirty-five, so.
No, that's frontage, fifty feet.
To the left. And that's a relief that, um, the district is looking for.
Oh, so the other, the other setbacks are met?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. This one has to be fifty, just right here. Thank you.
If I may ask, um, I, I went by there this afternoon and I, do you ever see any drainage going down towards that wetland from your house? It looked like it was pretty flat.
No.
So there's nothing draining down towards that wetland?
No, the only time I ever see it, have seen it a little bit damp is like after the snow when it's melting. But I, I never actually walked all the way, I mean, just looking from the woods a little bit, so I don't know how deep it is or, I've never walked the lot at all, but I don't think that, I don't believe that anything drains down to that.
All right. Can I ask why you want to add an ADU?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, so my mom, um, my father just passed away and my mom's living by herself and she had a stroke a couple of years ago and it's hard for her to get around. Um, she's feeling good, but it would be great for us to have her right there. She lives in Wakefield and we have to go out there all the time. My sister's in Milton, constantly at her house. This weekend I spent the night there. Um, so just to have her closer would help our family a lot and help her knowing that she's safe and if something happens, she can, we're literally right next door. So that's the reason that we are applying for this. Just to make all of our lives easier and know that she's safe and sound. But also it will be really helpful because we were constantly driving up to Wakefield.
Hmm.
And the other thing with winter coming too, and I know that this couldn't be done before winter, but we're just nervous about having her, um, she has her own house, so I mean, she has to deal with plowing and sanding and all that, so it's going to be, you know, we just want to get that part over with as soon as we can possibly. She looked into her possibly buying a place too. She had flip-flopped back and forth, um, but she wants to live, I'd rather have her live right next to us, um, and she's, she's on board with that. Sometimes she was going back and forth, but it's just a better all-around situation for the whole family.
Now, this is strictly for putting up an ADU building, not moving septic or adding septic or well or any of that? It's just the structure, correct?
Yeah, it's just the structure. And we already have a, a septic system that meets the criteria.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
The, uh, the current septic design is, is for four-bedroom septic and the home is currently all three-bedroom, so that, uh, the bedroom would be the ADU.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
So, do you want me to go through my?
Please. Yes, we, we ask that you make your presentation so that, and we, we act on the information that's brought to us.
So I already explained, you know, why we'd like to do this and how we'd help our family make life easier and safer, I think, for my mom. Um, and that we were requesting to get closer to the fifty-feet setback to the poorly drained wetland area. For number one, the supporting information, um, the variance would not be contrary, contrary to the public interest because, um, the, the ADU will blend with the current house and will control the house given the characteristics of the neighborhood. Um, also, the ADU will not threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the public. Um, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The ADU will still respect a reasonable distance from the poorly drained area and still respect the septic system distances and not impact, I don't believe that would impact that area. Uh, substantial justice is done to allow this minor encroachment to the poorly drained area enables the ADU to be built without impacting the septic system area and the existing structure of the dwelling. The values of the surrounding property are not diminished. On the contrary, the ADU will. On the contrary, the ADU will add value to the individual property, thereby adding value to surrounding property and neighborhood. It seems to me that in that neighborhood, the more square footage, the higher the property value. Number five, literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. A no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And the poorly drained area is the unnecessary hardship. Because if that area did not exist, I wouldn't be able to be approved for the building permit. The proposed use is reasonable one and we're requesting a small amount of encroachment and still leaving the poorly drained area untouched and unaltered, which I think is probably the most important thing. You know, it just seems it's, I don't know exactly how many feet that is, but you know, we're not getting that close to that area. And as you had asked, does it seem to drain into there? I don't believe so. I think it, I think what happens is when the snow melts there, it just goes to that area because it goes down a little bit. So, I haven't noticed anything.
Thank you.
That's the last one here.
Thank you.
Do any of the board members have questions?
You actually stated that there will be no work done within that area at all? That area's not going to be disturbed?
At the wetland?
The poorly, poorly drained soil area.
Yes, so, correct, correct. In that little box on the map where it's squared off, correct, it would only be where the proposed addition is. I don't, I mean, I don't know, you wouldn't have to go any further than that other than maybe take a tree out right next to the rapid slope, right next to the house or something, but I don't believe.
No major tree removal. The, in order to dig for a foundation, yeah, you'd need approximately three, four feet on either side of the trench. So although that, the digging will go to that point, but it'll all be replaced. Probably better than it is now, so.
The three or four feet still does not get you within the poorly drained soils? Keeps you, keeps you outside of that poorly drained soils, correct? Okay. And with there being, it's not, it's poorly drained and not very poorly drained, so we don't have to worry about having a wetland scientist go in, correct?
That's correct. In fact, the person that surveyed, Blaisdell Survey, is also a wetland scientist. And he went out before the survey, so he made two trips. The first one to check to see what was really there.
Okay. Yeah, you meant.
It's not obvious.
Okay, and you, you mentioned that, he said it's dry most of the time, but when he did go out, was it wet at all? So that he looked for all the little creatures, whatever else they need to?
He said there were no critters.
Perfect, okay, I'm happy with that, thank you.
No, it's terminology.
It's probably just seasonally wet now and then sometime. I mean, all these years, all these years, this development, been there quite a few years, and this has not grown into a wetlands.
Correct, and he described.
It was probably put down as a wetland just for, you know, because it appeared to be wet.
He described it as a slight depression.
Right.
So most point collects possibly, if there is any moisture available.
It was probably a rut that didn't get filled in and that's now it's poorly drained soil. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone here to speak for or against, so. Does anyone on the board have additional questions? Need any more information?
Close our motion.
Motion would be in order then.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes. And now close the public hearing.
Madam Chairwoman, I believe that we approve the application for case one-nine dash zero one one dash VA from Thomas and Patricia Mattie to accept their request for an ADU. Giving them relief from article three B two of the Nottingham zoning ordinance on eight McKale Way.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now moving to the five criteria. For the granting of a variance. All those who believe granting this variance would not be contrary to the public interest, please raise your right hand. No one's opposed. The spirit, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. All those who agree with that, raise your right hand. Substantial justice would be done. Raise your right hand. And the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. And owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. All those who agree with that, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Question has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, the thirty-day rule applies to you. Anyone in the world can, can.
Challenge this.
Appeal this decision. So if you get Gary out there with his bulldozer and somebody appeals it, you could lose a little money. I mean, that's up to you to decide. You certainly may start tonight if you wish, but most people agree that. Because there's thirty, there's a thirty-day appeal period.
Wait, what do you mean easy money?
Well, let's.
Do we start the job and then we have to stop now or we get?
No, no, you probably, but if they won their appeal, then you would have to stop. If they overturned our decision, then you would have to stop. And they have thirty days to file. Do they have to file with forty-five days now?
Forty-five, new law has passed.
Thank you, forty-five days. I told the last guy the wrong thing.
Yeah, we did.
Forty-five days they have to appeal, so can they go directly to the court? They don't have to ask for a rehearing?
No, rehearing is requested first.
Yes.
So they have to ask us for a rehearing. We have to agree to it. If we do, then they have to go through the rehearing and we may or may not change our decision. Or if we refuse to rehear it because we don't think the rehearing it would do any thing, they can then file with the court. It doesn't happen too often, but it does happen once in a while. This is something you need to consider as a, a person with a checkbook.
I mean, I wonder if I should come to all the houses and say, why didn't you come? Did you, or is that going too far?
Well, you, you don't exactly have a room full of people protesting, so.
You're pretty safe, I think.
Three other or four other people. I can't remember what.
So.
But myself was included, so I think it was four neighbors.
Even if people don't show up, sometimes they'll send a letter to the board if they can't show up in person.
Oh, okay.
But they don't have to show up, you know, this is televised and they can watch the hearing.
Oh, okay.
The, the, the decision will be posted on the town website.
Yeah.
And so if anybody has to be in their bonnet about it, you know, you could, it could be challenged.
Okay.
It doesn't happen very often, but it can, so just want you to be aware.
Two lots aside is.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It goes well.
Enjoy time with your mom. Yes. It's precious. Absolutely, I know that all too well. Hi, Gary.
So Joanna, do we have any staff, board members' updates?
Cases for next meeting?
I don't kind of, I'm sure they've noted and forget. No cases right now. Zoning changes that were proposed at the zoning board, the joint meeting are being worked on. I should have a draft to send out to you guys. Have the opportunity even as town citizens, not just the board members, to communicate with the planning board. If you have suggestions, changes, whatever. So I'll send them out as soon as I can. I do have rumblings of more applications coming, so please keep in mind.
When's the deadline for applications for November?
It is October twenty-eighth.
Okay, so, for a couple of weeks, almost. And so when is the deadline, it's probably on a chart in here, for the planning board to submit zoning changes? They must have to have a public hearing about it.
Yes, we do.
I think you're, you have the important meeting date chart and I know.
Right here.
So it's right after this thing. Right after tonight's information.
Right there. First, go ahead.
January twentieth, is that right? Last day to hold first public hearing on adoption or amendment of zoning ordinance, January twentieth.
I don't have all that stuff on here, so if I made the chart.
And, and at the last week's meeting, we did review quite a few of the changes, the ones that were most critical. And some of the other cleanup issues that are.
Something going to be happening with the two-hundred feet of.
That, yes, we are just redefining, I believe, frontage, is that not correct?
I think so, per what the RSA actually defines frontages, which would keep a lot out of here.
Yes.
Because we get a lot of those.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, and we.
We discussed it a lot at that meeting.
I must have said it a million times, we've got to fix this. We've got to redefine this, so yes, that frontage is being redefined. We hope that'll be up to the public.
Makes sense, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a preponderance of our case, it's like I said.
Yes.
Because we have a lot of old lots on private roads.
Well, and that's Joanna presented to the board, to the planning board, the percentage of cases that we have seen within the last, especially the last two years.
I don't remember what the percentage of cases. Most of your cases.
More than fifty percent, probably.
Yeah, I think it was closer to ninety.
Yeah, yeah. Not surprised. Okay, so then the last thing on the agenda is the minutes.
Well, Peter went to the ZBA thing, should he not at least?
Maybe after the minutes.
Okay.
Other business.
Madam Chair, I, well, it was under staff member update, but okay. I moved, we approved the minutes of August twentieth, twenty nineteen as amended. Because I did send some changes out.
I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August twentieth, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Okay, staff members' update, we're going back to that now.
Yes, I did attend the ZBA training and they yelled at me for abstaining. They said, you're not, shouldn't be abstaining from, you know, because I discussed that whole of the feelings that went into the process.
To tell the boards what their rationale was.
Well, their feeling.
Because I asked the same question, I asked for legal counsel on that.
Well, their feeling, first of all, is that we are like a judge and jury. We have to make a ruling and, you know, abstaining isn't a ruling, so you have to make a ruling and if you feel strongly one way or the other. So that was one of the things. The second thing, which I alluded to, is they talked about the importance of documentation and how all our documents have to be accurate. Anything can be challenged and everything they submit has to be accurate or we can reject the application. So that's why I was reacting to that initially.
No, I understand that. I, I think this is a particular case, though. Wouldn't normally see, it's not that something was wrong, it's that circumstances changed and he had an equitable interest in the property from the get-go. When you have something under agreement, you have certain rights that are very different. And he also was their agent, so. To me, it's like, it's the same thing. It wasn't really a change.
So, so we know that it's happened once. It could happen again. Is there another way the board would prefer I notify and the application be noted differently as well? That the property is under agreement with said applicant, is that, would that have helped?
No, I, I would ask for a legal opinion on that.
Okay.
That's what I would do. Because just as a person, I'm, I have no legal training whatsoever. But to me, things that, that happen in civil court, reason is, reasonableness is a big issue. To me, this is a very reasonable change that doesn't really change anything. And I think the court would say it was fine.
Well, I, I mean, the court, a lot of times is, they say you don't have standing, so.
But he had standing.
He had standing, yeah, right. He had standing, so I don't care.
In all, in all, with both hats on, as their agent or as the owner, he had standing.
Did he have purchase or sale?
And as the buyer.
Right.
He had three hats on.
Right. I wasn't sure what the rush was, though. I mean, he obviously wanted to get this right through and.
Winter's coming.
Well, let's see.
Because a lot can still be done in, from now till the end of December. Actually, sometimes even into Jan, the end of June where a foundation can be put in and you can get a lot done between now and then, if you get the approvals.
And additionally, except for you, the rest of the board did not have a problem with it. So to me, it wasn't a rush. It was like the guy's gone through the process, he's paid a lot of money to come here because it's not free to come here. And unless we have a real reason, if we need legal advice, believe me, I'm, I'm in for putting it off.
The other question I had, which had to do with this case, but well, this is just the hardship question, number five, is that the guy's paid four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for a house on Pawtucket Lake in two back lots. So he'd gotten his value. It's not like he had to develop those two, it was a hardship on him.
That's not really your business.
So I didn't really see what the hardship was.
That is not your business.
Well, what's the hardship?
Well, he owns two other lots and he wants to build on it, that's.
There are lots, there are lots that were created as building lots.
They weren't created for year-round houses, though, and that's one of the questions I think we need to ask the lawyers. A lot of these, these lots around Pawtucket Lake were not meant to be building lots. They were meant to be camp lots.
Well, how many camps versus buildings are there?
Well, right now.
There are very few camps.
As far as the older buildings, I'll say it's half and half, half camps and half older houses. As far as us giving approvals for people to put a new house on a six-thousand-square-foot or ten-thousand-square-foot lot on a lake is like, I mean, they have to practically clear cut, what's he going to do with these two lots? This guy's going to be, he's going to have to clear cut that.
Nothing to do with the application before us.
It's going to affect the public interest, though. Anything that affects the public interest, we have to consider.
The public's safety, health, safety, welfare.
Yes, and the property values.
The issue, the issue you're forgetting, Peter, though, is that the lots and what he's requesting meet all zoning criteria except for frontage on a class-five or road better.
No, it doesn't meet any of our building criteria. They don't have a thirty thousand square foot.
Peter, timeout, wait a minute, let me finish my talking to you here. If we, if we are able to change the definition for frontage, we won't even have been seeing this case. So you would have nothing at all to say about him putting the house on his lot because he would meet all criteria.
Well, I would hope the planning board would, would look at a property like this because the slope is like this on this property.
You wouldn't need to go to the planning board.
The drainage problems already, huh?
You would not need to go to the planning board.
It's already an approved lot, so.
It's a, it's a lot record?
What a mess, this town's turning into a mess. And people keep saying, you approve everything, you let anybody do anything in this town.
I'll think it's your lot.
Huh?
I'll think it's your lot.
Well, the one that with the single-family home is fifteen acres. The one with the four cottages, which include ours, is about two, but.
There are four residences on it.
Well, one's only one year-round residence. And that's the one farthest from the lake and has a four-bedroom septic and a well and, you know, with the, you know, you know, the well radius and everything else. But these things, the thing we approved last month was horrendous, you know, to be perfectly blunt. And you're going to, the well radius is going on these abutters, the abutters didn't like it. He's going to have to clear cut to fit a house in septic and, and it's definitely going to impact that neighborhood and those property values.
The ordinance says nothing about clear cutting.
Well, no, I'm saying if you, if you take, do a drive-by and you imagine the houses where they want to put them, you would be horrified, some of these things we've been approving. And we're going to see it. We're going to go down these neighborhoods, it's going to be all clear cut.
We're approving one thing, the road frontage. The rest of it, we're not approving.
But when we make that approval, we're approving everything else.
The five criteria are to be applied only to the road frontage question.
Well, we approve that two-hundred, that variance to the two-hundred-foot road frontage, we're saying, yes, this isn't a public. yes, this is in the public interest. Yes, it's not going to hurt the other property values. Yes, you know, so we're saying yes to those questions, if we approve that, that one variance. That's why I'm saying, if I think this is not in the public interest, I'm going to vote no. If I think it's going to hurt the neighborhood and hurt the surrounding property values, I'm going to vote no. That's my conscience, that's my job on this board. If we approve everything, why even have this board? Why do we even exist? If we're going to approve everything that's put before us with no scrutiny? I mean, like I said, our-
That is really, when you say things like that, it really-
I'm sorry, but some of the things we've approved this year have been wrong.
With no scrutiny, well, that's your opinion.
That's my opinion, yes.
Right, and I disagree with you most of the time.
Yeah, I know.
Anyway.
Everybody does.
Madam Chair?
The reason we have a zoning board is, is to give people relief from it.
But if we approve everything, then-
And they're not hurting anybody.
Then, I mean, once again, this town's going to go to hell.
We're required, we're required to approve it if they meet the five criteria.
There's got to be uncontrolled building everywhere, nobody's going to have any privacy, there's going to be people looking out their windows at their windows.
That's not our job, you should, you should get on the planning board.
Well, in my opinion, it is. Protect the public interest, that's our sworn duty.
These, these people could protect their own interest by buying those lots and don't build them.
But how can you afford a $200,000 law?
Well, that's, that's, well, how are you going to make this guy buy a law, and then say, oh, no, you can't do anything with it?
The ones with the money, when? That's the way it works in this country anyway. So one, the more money you got, the more rights you got. Is that the way you want it? Or are we all equals in this democracy? I'm an equal, but I don't have much money, so I'm, in the eyes of, eyes of law, I'm not much compared to a millionaire who can go ahead and buy these lots, and if they, we say no, they can threaten to sue us, and then the town council's telling us, oh, you better approve it, we don't want to spend attorney's fees on defending the town's positions, which is what we're feeling. They don't want to spend any attorney's fees.
That's your opinion? You, you, you make every statement like the whole board agrees with you, and clearly it doesn't.
No, I know.
So.
But that's, you know, I'm not a, you know, a head nodder, somebody, you know, I have to speak my mind. I can't just go along to get along. I never could.
But you're, you're, come on.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Teresa.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I wish you would.
Thank you.
And move we adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor of adjourning, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
And I apologize for anybody I've attended once again. I can't help it.